Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have the time at 7:35 PM. If you all stand with me and join in the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. With that, Mr. Easton, will you go ahead and call the rule, please?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Raymert.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
All are present. This is a special meeting of the German Township trustees, purpose of which is to meet with representatives from the city of Germantown, the village of Farmersville, and Jackson Township to discuss a proposed joint economic development district at the southwest corner of Manning Road in Germantown-Farmersville Pike on land owned by the Valley View School District.
...
I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for any public comments if you have any. Please limit your comments to five minutes. State your name and address for the record if you have any comments. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh.
Yes, we can hear you. You are frozen, it looks like, Mr. Cross. Give you another... Alright, Mr. Cross, it looks like you're frozen right now. If you come back and are connected, we'll obviously allow you to have comments later. Is there anyone else that has any comments?
You've got a buffering issue, Mark Cross.
Okay. He may come back and have some comments and obviously allow that for...
You guys are...
...rejoining, are able to, Mr. Cross. It may work best, Dr. Cross, if it's not a lot of comments. Maybe you can chat it because it's not...
Well, I just got quite a few quotes. Or no. You guys are... Mark? Easton, can you...
I cannot hear you, Dr. Cross. You have a buffering issue with your computer. You might turn your video off and see if that helps. Can you hear me any better now?
I'm gonna type to Mark Easton and tell him that we'll come back with questions at the end.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah. Mark, I can hear you. This is David Darren.
Can the board hear me?
Yes, right now, we can hear you. May just mute his line. We're gonna have to text him and see if he can come back. Okay. Yeah. Dr. Cross, we had to go ahead and mute your line here. You're really cutting in and out. We cannot get a good feed on you. If you come back, just say something in the chat and we'll try to unmute and see if you can be heard at that point clearly. Okay, so last meeting we met and really talked a lot about the timeline. We didn't really have any substantial changes to the JED contract. There were a lot of steps that we laid out as next steps that I sent in the email after the meeting. Most all of those things, I think, have been complete. But I wanted to go through those to start out the meeting to see where we stood with all those next steps. So Brenda, I'm gonna rely on you on several of these. We had you to request the parcel information needed to complete the exhibits for the JED contract, as well as reaching out to Haley to complete any informations for the parcels. I think part of that's been done. I'm not 100% sure where that stands. So I'll pause here and see, Brenda, if you can help me understand if there's anything you need or if anything that's not available right now that you may need in the future. Brenda, are you... Can you hear us? You may be muted.
Two. I think she was two.
That's two?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So Haley sent me some parcel numbers and legal descriptions, which I... And a map, which I attached to Exhibit A. So you need to review and make sure that that is accurate. What we're still missing is the zoning map. And I looked at the map on the township's zoning website, which shows the zoning for the entire township. And I think that if I can figure out which sections on there are the property for the JED, we could mark it on that map and include that also. So what I'm probably going to do is take that map that I printed off and mark what I think is the applicable area and send it to you guys and have you either confirm or mark it up and scan it back and then we'll make a map for the zoning map. So that's the last piece for the exhibits. All of the other exhibits have been attached. Now, that doesn't mean that you won't have changes to them before we say everything is final. But I think we have all of the exhibits at this point, except the zoning map, which we think we can figure that out.
Okay. Clear. I think all the next steps that we had beyond that have been done. To your point, you were able to update the contract with any edits. You distributed or had someone distribute it well in advance of this meeting, which I appreciate it. Hopefully, most of the parties got a chance to review it prior to this evening and we'll go through any of those changes tonight. I guess first thing we'll do after this one topic is we'll get into any changes or questions that people had and then we can start talking about continuing the next steps, which Brian has already reached out to the school to try to get on the agenda there. So we'll talk that as well. When you talk zoning map, one question that did pop up, and I'm not sure we ever completely put to bed, and when you were talking zoning, it brought it back in my mind, is there is a property there that residents have been living in and they will be till the end of the year. My understanding was for the JED, there can be no parcels that are zoned residential. And Haley, correct me, that one's zoned agricultural as well? It's just that they have residents living there. Is there any issue? I don't know how informed you are, Brenda, with the situation with that property. But I just wanna make sure that that's not something we're overlooking.
Well, it is a problem to have residents in the JED.
So specifically, Brenda, this is Haley. It is zoned agricultural but has a residential use at this time.
Hold on, I'm looking for... The area, "No electors shall reside within the area on the effective date of the contract."
I don't have the agreement. My understanding is there's an agreement where they're able to live on the property until the end of the year. The property's already been...
They moved two weeks ago.
They did.
The house is empty.
Okay.
The house is empty?
Yeah.
Well, that would be good. The house itself is not a problem, but people residing in the house are the problem.
Okay, we'll confirm that.
If no one is in the house, then we don't have a problem.
I guess, Brian, if you don't mind to take that as a note when you visit the school to ask that question?
I can. So you guys saw my email to try to get on the agenda for either their meeting or their work session. We are actually... They've asked us to kinda put together, I think, just a one-page summary of the next steps and where we need their support. They... I don't know. I assume they've probably still got some full agendas to work through. So that's something that either Brenda or I or the both of us maybe can just compile. I don't think we need a lot from them. But we'll compile that, send it up to the school, and Mr. Richards is gonna collect any questions they had and get back to us. He didn't think there would be a lot, but that's...
And we...
So I'd be happy to send that. I can send that question up as well.
Okay, and when we send that information, we probably ought to send them the draft petition just so they have them to start reviewing, even though we're not asking them to sign them yet. We want them to have a chance to look at them and go over them with their attorneys.
Yep, good idea.
Okay. Okay, so that's that. So you think that you're gonna be speaking to them or just sending the one pager and then they'll put you on the agenda later? Or what are your thoughts there, Brian? What did they say?
They just want the one pager for next steps at this point. If there's significant questions, I assume we'll point up to talk to them. If not, if it was only a handful, Mr. Richards is gonna collect them and get back to the group or to me and I'll forward them to the group and just so we can see what their concerns are.
Okay. Okay. With that, that was all the next steps from last meeting. So at this point, I think it's to open it up for any questions regarding the draft contract and where it stands. And I know Germantown Township here had one question that several of us had and so I'll go ahead and throw it out there. I sent the email this afternoon and you guys may not have seen it. I know it was late, but I had asked the question about the paragraph on page four, I believe. It's the contract, sorry, I think it's on page five. Is it five?
It is on mine.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay, let's... I'm not sure. This section, maybe section better, is section seven on contributions to the district. It's about halfway down on section seven, maybe second paragraph from section eight. "The Germans shall hold all records or documents of the district for safekeeping. Germans shall maintain those records and documents as public records of Germantown and shall provide those copy of records for contracting parties and, you know, records requests, that kinda thing." So I thought we had talked in previous meetings, our remembrance from Germantown Township was that Germantown was the one to do that and maintain and perform the public records requests. Brian, does that sound correct?
Yeah, so we had debated that back and forth. I think this came down to, one, all the tax records will be kept by Farmersville, correct? Because they'll be collecting the income taxes. So this is really just keeping the financial reports, maybe the budget and maybe minutes of the meetings. I don't think we had any issue with that. The only concern from our staff was if they get excessive public records requests or... I don't know. If it's taking an inordinate amount of time, they were concerned with being reimbursed for that time. I don't see it happening. I mean, this board is not gonna be meeting that often that there's even gonna be a chance for that many public records requests. But, you know, that was the only concern. But I don't think we have any issue with putting Germantown there for their records holder as long as my understanding of those records that are described is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, in addition, there'll be any sort of policies, like when you get started, you gotta pass all the regular policies, like records retention and conflict of interest and, you know, just these miscellaneous policies. So those are part of the records. And then, yeah, it's just your minute meetings and any resolutions that the board may pass. Again, initially, you'll pass the resolution to levy the income tax. So you'll have several board actions, resolutions, documents in the first meeting or two. But then after that, yeah, your meetings should be fairly boring and they shouldn't produce a lot of paper or records.
Yeah, and I knew Nick's not here tonight. Also made a good point, too, that, you know, any records request may very well be related to taxes collected or how it was distributed or anything, which would be, you know... Farmersville would be more in a position to answer those questions readily. And so the question was, you know, will we set up Farmersville that way? I don't wanna spring that tonight considering Nick's not here. But I guess that's something to think about, Brian, is, you know, you guys may be getting questions that you might have to have Farmersville, the administrator, answer.
Yeah, I assume the questions would probably have to... They wouldn't come to the city of Germantown, right? They would probably come to the JED board, who would then...
Yeah.
Whoever the secretary or treasurer or whoever is that designated person would go down to the city building, open wherever their drawer is with all their files and gather the documents, right? I mean, maybe really cut our staff out of it, I don't know. But they'd be willing to help, so I think that's fine. My understanding with the tax records was it had to stay with Farmersville. I don't know, Brenda.
Brenda, I get that. That's the first set of changes, that paragraph, everything that references German should go to Germantown.
Okay, yep.
And then I knew Nick had sent a question there. I don't know if he told you the question or if he was just gonna send on email. I can read it if you want.
So Germantown Township's gonna keep all the meetings...
Germantown.
Germantown, so, okay. And we are solely responsible for the income tax, right?
Yeah, you guys will be... But the plan, the going plan, has to be confirmed by Nick because I think if the Farmersville administer requests the tax, you guys would have that information, tax records, so...
Okay.
Oh, yeah, here's Nick. He had an additional question. The last paragraph on page three, which is in section six on the terms. Said that Jackson Township can withdraw from the contract at any time. If they withdraw, all of their rights, responsibilities, and obligations will become Germantown Township's. He wanted to know if that was truly the intent, as he didn't remember discussing that detail. So Brenda, I guess the question's for you.
Okay, and we did have some discussions about what would happen to the contract. This was in connection with the renewal terms, with where this conversation started. And there were questions about, you know, what if one party didn't agree to renew it? Would the whole contract be over? And so this was the way we discussed handling if a... If one of the parties, since this is an unusual JED, usually most JEDs have two parties. And so if one party leaves, you're done. You can't have a JED with only one party. In this case, we have four parties and we only need one township and one municipality. However, we have to have Germantown Township because that's where the area is located that's going to be in the JED. So we set it up that if Jackson Township decided that they wanted to exit the contract and not be a part of the JED in the future, terminate the entire JED as the critical township is German. So then all of their rights and responsibilities would then flow to the remaining township, in which case it's merely, you know, the revenue split primarily because Jackson doesn't have very many obligations and no, you know, significant concrete. Similarly, between the two municipalities, there's another section later that says if one of the municipalities wants to exit the contract, either of the municipalities can exit. But once one exits, the other cannot without terminating the whole thing. So if Farmersville decides they want out of the contract, they can leave. And then Germantown would assume all of their obligations. In this case, they would become the income tax administrator. So Farmersville does have some initial role that Germantown would have to pick up if Farmersville exited. Similarly, if Germantown decided to exit, then Farmersville would be the sole municipality and then would take on all of the functions of the municipalities within the JED. And since they're already...
Brenda, real quick...
...be administering. Yep.
You mentioned, you know, obviously you have to have the property to... Germantown Township secured the property, but without the utilities, that's a necessity as well, right? I mean, as far as, you know, you said... Go ahead.
It's not a necessity under the JED statute.
Okay. I can just have that.
For development, yes, utilities are necessary for the school and so forth. But they're not a part... They're not a required part of a JED contract. And you can... You could put property in a JED that doesn't have any utilities.
Okay.
It could have well water and septic systems.
Okay. This is gonna have a pretty significant impact on the village of Farmersville with the utilities. I reached out and, I mean, we're gonna be pumping a whole lot more water and collecting a lot of the sewer as well. So, I mean, and I don't, you know, I don't mean to sway off-topic, so I'll let you do your thing and then I could just have a minute.
No, no, I mean, I guess, I don't know what you guys discussed in Farmersville. I mean, the way it's gone, we've had a lot of these types of discussions earlier on and we come to preliminary agreements on the splits and those types of things. So I don't know what we're seeing, but, I mean, if you feel like there's something that you need to discuss and we can do...
I guess, again, I've only been there two months, so I'm just trying to catch up. We drained a water tower and then rehab on it. We're trying to get things ready for the school.
Yeah.
You know, we've got the filter media that we have intended replacing and that's gonna cost a lot of money. And I guess my question is, I've seen the 35-35-20-10. So the 35% to Germantown, 35% to Germantown Township, coming to Farmersville, 1% to Jackson Township. Were those numbers based off of services rendered?
No.
Okay. Population?
They were... No, not really. We originally tried for a 25-25-25-25 split and Lamb said that was too much for Farmersville. So then, once we got off of that, that's how we switched it to the... It was 35-35-15-15. And then the town, Jackson Township and Farmersville decided...
I mean, this is gonna have a... I understand that the traffic count is going to go up for the township. I'm certain you guys are probably gonna do a traffic study. They'll put in for an OPWC grant on roads. They're gonna widen the roads and then that road's gonna be good for 20 or 25 years. The utilities, however, that's indefinite. I mean, that is forever. You know, I mean, that's a direct impact on the village indefinitely. But I'm just, you know, it's gonna cost us a whole lot of months of operating costs in the water and sewer and the chemicals. We're probably gonna have to backwash more often. I haven't heard anything about the rehab for the lift station out at the school, the water main extension. I don't know whose obligation or... And that may be something that isn't involved with the JED and directly towards the school, some of it. But, I mean, it's gonna be a pretty serious impact on the village for the... To be able to maintain and supply those utilities to the district. As much, you know, I just, I hate to be honest, but, I mean, the 35-35-20-10 seemed...
Do you, I mean, do you have any idea on numbers? I understand what you're saying.
I meant on my way down here, I had to grab the quarterly report from the fiscal officer.
Yeah.
I can have something, too, but...
Well, what I'll give you is just the estimated tax revenue collection and just see that, you know, says you think that that's reasonable or whatever. I mean, at a 25% split, which is what, as Jay said, we originally had agreed, in years one through five where the construction revenue's coming in, those five years would roughly bring in $200,000 roughly for Farmersville. 20% obviously plus, so let's call it 170, you know, somewhere in that range. And then for a year six through 10, the revenue is estimated to be slightly less because there's no construction at that point, it's just salaries and wages in the district. It's called $120,000 and 25%, which is over 100 at 20%. So that's 20,000 or less than that, no, 20,000 a year. 20,000 a year for year six through 10, call 30,000 a year through one through five. So I don't know if you have an idea of what those costs would be. But, I mean, is that in the range of covering that type of...
Well, I mean, I could, again, I know that we wanna move forward with the school and we're doing, we're taking the necessary steps. I mean, the tower rehab costs us more than what we're gonna make. I mean, and that's something that is, you know, that's absolutely 110%. You have to ask, you know, is there a $300,000 project?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, obviously, this is the one representing Farmersville, what their expenses are. I've heard something about a lift pump or a lift station or something, but I didn't hear about, like, tower rehab and all these other things that may or may not contribute to the school. But, I mean, we're pretty deep down that line, but, I mean, we're not too far. And that's at the end of the day, it's gonna come back to the village and they have to pass it. Brenda, by my understanding, a majority vote, which means at least three of your members on council will have to pass this. So I would say, we can chat it more. I don't wanna shut down the conversation if you're gonna chat it, but it might be worth it if you don't wanna, like, at least going back to Nick and saying, we need to have this discussion with council before we get any further on the JED. Make sure the council is willing.
The breakdown, the 35%, can you guys give me, like, what services are being rendered from the other entities?
I believe that the 35-35, and feel free to jump in here, Mr. Wosick, was they somehow, I believe it was Mr. Wosick, had looked at maybe student service or things of that nature, where they came up with that, maybe the 30 for Farmersville and Jackson. Did someone have looked at numbers from that aspect, I believe?
Okay, 'cause I think, maybe my numbers are off.
Back in, like, January, I think.
Mr. Wosick would know.
Brian, is it roughly 975 additional students and staff along with the... So you have the elementary school, the maintenance building, and the Board of Education buildings that are all gonna be at this new campus?
We're not sure about the maintenance building yet. I haven't heard... You're talking like the bus barn out there?
Yeah.
I don't think they have plans to move that yet. I know Mr. Richards is trying to figure out a way to make that happen. As far as student counts, that's another good question. I'm not sure the additional students moving. It would be pre-K through, what is it currently, fourth or fifth grade? But I guess one thought is, I don't know, you know, we... I'm a little more familiar with this just because in the past, within the past three years or so, we've gone through and kinda done a... and kinda done a comprehensive rate study to make sure that our rates lined up with all the maintenance that are water and sewer projects needed, right? So, I mean, yeah, there's gonna be additional use, right? But there's gonna be additional, that's almost like an additional rate payer, correct? As the school uses more and more, their rate's gonna go up, not necessarily up, but their use is gonna go up, you're gonna receive that additional revenue and that, whatever your billing rates are, should cover the maintenance of your system.
Do you already, you, correct me if I'm wrong, you would already service the current high school?
And the, and the middle school.
And the middle school. So it would be an additional preschool through, I believe it's sixth grade, that is currently in Germantown.
Yeah.
So, you're getting-
The nine hundred and seventy-five students would be for the elementary school and the Board of Education building.
That's preschool through six and nine.
That sounds, there are about two hundred people per graduating class here in high school?
Probably one fifty.
I guess that's kinda like-
One fifty.
Okay.
Maximum.
I mean, the, so the, so the other thirty-five percent and the thirty-five percent though, as far as those, it was based off, it was based off the amount of students per district?
Something did-
Well, Germantown, or Germantownship is providing police, fire-
I thought German, Germantown, Germantown, okay, police and fire?
Fire is joint.
Okay.
But in the agreement, it says German. So fire, M, uh, fire EMS and police is all provided by Germantownship, Germantownship.
So Germantown and Germantownship are gonna provide the police and fire services?
No, Germantownship, yeah, sorry, I, I spoke misspelled. Germantownship is providing police-
Police services.
And fire EMS through our joint levy with the city of Germantown.
Germantown and Germantownship have two different police, but we share-
Joint fire EMS.
Joint fire EMS. And you're at the intersection of two county roads too, so when we're talking about road improvements, Manning Road and the Pike are both maintained by Montgomery County.
So that's it, no additional costs for the township?
There's TBD on other things, right? Because you got all the traffic now that'll be going up Weaver Road to get to the high school, which is a bad intersection already, there's, there's other things that need to be determined on. Because, yes, the high school does sit on county roads, so many improvements will be at the county on that, but you got other traffic now patterns that will be going in different directions, so.
Well, Jackson Township's gonna be, creates problems for us on Claymore. Yeah, and our other roads that we have to take care of. I mean, we have road resumes built in by Germantownship and, which everybody thought that Jackson didn't have a dog in the fight, but eventually we do.
Yeah, I mean, Clayton's a great example, I mean-
Exactly.
Yeah, it's just like Weaver, except it's not blind, where Weaver is more on that.
Yeah, the intersection, right.
But, yeah, I mean, what, what I'll say is, we went through this ad nauseam and tried to, tried to do this in a way that everyone could live with. I think everyone would say in the negotiation, everyone feels they're shorted to some degree and that's probably where everyone sits right now to some degree.
I just feel like the residents in Farmersville, you know, you increase the water rates to try and make up for that additional percentage.
Well, that's the part I, I don't understand, cause I, we're not doing water here, so I don't have the information on that, but I think Brian makes a great point is that you are able to fill the reimbursement, I don't know how that works or how you build a school versus everyone else or whatnot, but a police, if we wanna collect more for services on police, we either do it through the JED or we raise the, raise the, the levy on our township residents. And so, we don't have a way to build a school for police service, EMS service, roads, but we're only gonna be able to do it through the JED, whereas you have at least some kind of mechanism to get reimbursed for, for your use there.
I think when our trash would be a pretty comfortable, I think we'd raise trash rates.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, it, it's a fair question. I think this is one where, obviously, the council has to vote at some point, so if you've got more consternation, bring it up with Nick and make sure that you guys feel good about it, right? I mean, this, would it-
But it doesn't matter if we tax it or not, though?
Not, unless you don't wanna in it. I mean, you don't, you're not essential, is, is your question.
Right.
Yes, you're not essential.
Okay.
But to your point, if you want money, yes, it matters.
Okay.
But, I mean, I, that, I know that comes off curt, that's not the way I intended, I'm just saying truthfully, and the truth of matter is if you guys didn't wanna participate in the JED and still went forward, you guys would just be missing revenue that's still on the hook for services.
Well, I think it'd increase their services a hundred times. And then the school would be kicking, would be knocking the crap out of their butt.
Absolutely, and is, is your point, Mike, I believe you're saying, if, if they don't feel like they're compensated fairly and have to do it through another mechanism, it'll create other problems.
Correct.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's a hundred percent valid thing.
Absolutely.
And, and that's why I would say, we're not, we're, we're pretty far down the path on this, it's not irreversible, but that's where I would go back to Nick. You guys sit down, you have, you know, people on, on staff that can do the numbers and find out what the impact is and what is, and there's been some estimates here. Now, granted, these are estimates, obviously what I read you earlier is estimates, but let's see if the numbers add up, and if not, that's a discussion with Nick and the council to come back before we go further on this, uh-
Okay.
You know? So, I, cause I think you made great points and I'm sure Nick would love to hear them. So, okay, a, anything else there?
No.
Okay. Okay. So, was there anything else? I think we've covered the two topics that were emailed ahead of this meeting. Um, I guess let's pause here while we're at this point. Dr. Cross, are you on? Haley, can you unmute him and see if he was able to, uh?
Yeah, Haley, can you hear me now, guys?
Yeah, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. So some of these questions, I think, have been answered. So the, the, the income tax percentage is gonna be one point five percent for year one through five, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Okay, and then, then one percent for, uh, for year five through ten, correct?
One point two five.
One point two five, okay, that's a little different. Uh, next question, uh, has there been any decision to hold back more income tax revenue for the JED board to use for improvements on the JED property? Are they just planning on taking the minimum to cover insurance and administrative costs and audits and things like that?
Yeah, we, we had that discussion again last meeting, I think fifteen thousand is what initially planned to be held back. Brenda, you can speak to the learning.
So, um, the other question-
That's, that's all, right.
Okay. So, uh, the other question, and then we've kinda asked this before, but I don't know if we've got a definitive answer. Does anyone know the total payroll for the Valley View School District, including all the buildings in 2020? Uh, cause this will give you some idea of what's the amount of funds is gonna be when the JED, uh, moves to the new buildings in 2024, hopefully? So does, does anyone have that figure?
I don't think we have the 2020.
No, I don't have anything for 2020.
Yeah, not 2020, I, I guess if you're, generally, if the heart of your question is, do we have a general idea of how much salaries and wages are at the school? Yes, we do, we don't have 2020 figures, but, uh, the wages at the high school annually are roughly three million dollars and, uh, at the, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. Wages, yeah, yeah, at, at the high school are three million dollars roughly, and then primary, intermediate, uh, are six and a half million-ish. So, it's, it's close to ten million dollars total across the district is what we have estimated.
And does that include the, uh, the junior high also?
Yeah, like the primary and intermediate. I believe that, I believe that's all of them, I believe that's everything together is roughly ten million dollars. So, if you do the one percent on that, you know, or whilst one point two five is what it'll be in the future, um, let's see here, somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars is what we have. Let me double check, I've got the numbers here somewhere. And I, I don't, I don't think they have one point two five in there.
Well, it, it, if, if, it would be nice to have at least the 2020, I think they would be a little bit more accurate to, to base everything on as far as what the different NBS are going to get. But, uh, yeah, and I, you know, we've tried to find that information and it seems like we can't, no one will give that out for some reason, but anyway. So last question, and I've asked this before, and has anyone calculated just how much revenue the city of Germantown will lose when the elementary and intermediate stu, stu, schools close and that students move to the new facility based on the 2020 figures? So basically, what's the total income tax from the schools minus the tax paid by employees that already live in Germantown and will still pay the city income tax?
Our guy, I know you were on the medium where we talked about this, but we did our best-
Yeah.
To estimate that. I think we figured it was around twenty-five percent, maybe twenty-five to thirty percent, actually it might've been thirty percent of the employees, based on the figures we had gotten, which were, I think, 2018, actually lived in the city, but you know, it, it's, it's a moving target, right? And we're never gonna be able to nail it down and say, you know, it's whatever, Germantown's gonna lose eighty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, you know, it's, it's constantly changing, right? And from 2018, I believe they had a pay freeze for two years, now those, they were still getting steps, right? So, so those figures will change a little bit, but it's not gonna be a significant change. I think they might've gotten somewhat of a raise this past year, so, so it may go up a little bit, but it, it's not, you know, it's, it's one or two percent here and there for, for basically everything we were trying to, we were trying to figure.
Could we get hard and fast?
So what, what's, what's the estimate then, Brian? Do you know, as far as going by the two eighteen figures and the fact the thirty, you know, you're guessing the thirty percent of the employees live in Germantown?
You're asking what is the estimate for, for the, for the loss for the city of Germantown?
Exactly, yeah.
I believe all in, it was around eighty-five. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I wanna say it was around eighty-five thousand, that included the BOE, assuming the BOE left.
Right, moved up to the old high school, yeah, okay. Yeah, it would just be kinda nice before, you know, you get this contract signed, that you get some kind of, at least concrete or as close to concrete figures, and I know that, that's kinda difficult, but, uh, I think the public would kinda like to know. I guess that, yeah.
I was just gonna say more, I, I think, uh, as far as the estimate, we do have the general estimates now on, on as far as how much revenue is lost, I think that's a fair question from the public, but at this point, we've tried to structure this so it's not based on Germantown losing revenue, it's based on, you know, providing economic development to this, this district. Um, and so I, I think it might be an ancillary question, but it could be pertinent to specifically why this JED is formed and what it's doing.
Yeah, well, you know, and we, you have talked about that and I appreciate that, but again, even tonight when they were talking about what Germantownship will contribute, Germantownship already contributes, you know, the, the police and the fire EMS with Germantown, so that's really nothing in addition to what you would normally do.
Yeah, I, I think that question will be additional services and then we'll, you know, it calls more issues to the road, I mean, that's, that's the whole discussion we've had with Brenda, you know, what I'm saying is, they're not necessarily incremental in performance of these types of services, but they're gonna be incremental in how frequent they occur and, and how often or how much you have to spend to do that. So, that, that's been a lot of the discussion. I totally understand where you're going, I, I think I'm just trying to explain the position that we've finally taken here is that, you know, that this is not necessarily above and beyond the things we're already providing, but they're much more frequent and much more expensive to maintain that infrastructure now.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and I, I, I agree, and I think that, that, you know, Farmersville bringing up the next one question tonight that hadn't been brought up as far as, you know, the wa, their water infrastructure and something that maybe, you know, all this night kinda needs to be kinda figured out, obviously, but, uh, but at least it's being addressed is the, is the good news, so. So that's basically all I had for tonight, thank you very much.
Dr. Cross, as always, even though we know who you are, please give us your name and address.
Yeah, after all that, yes, Mark Cross, seven four 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 South Divers Road. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both on that. Okay. So, are there any other questions about the draft contract? Does anyone have? I already asked that, but just confirm. Okay, so the, the steps Brenda, that I had after this meeting is, is to get to the school board or give them information, so you guys have it down, that, that Brian, I've got you and Brenda down, is creating some kinda information, you know, one pager or whatever to provide to the school district, uh, along with the question to confirm no residents are living at the school or at, on the school properties, you know, right there, that would be within the JED district, um, and give the petition, the draft petition, I'll call it, to the school board so they can review that. So, that's the first next step, hopefully you guys have that as a takeaway. And then if we're all in agreement that there's no changes on the contract as it stands, uh, we would be scheduling a public hearing with at least thirty days of published notice. Um, my, my perspective, and obviously everyone, please chime in on what their feelings are, we shouldn't be scheduling that meeting until we've at least given the school, uh, the information and gotten their initial feedback. I think it would kinda premature to do that, as well as, you know, give Eric an opportunity to go back to, you know, Nick and have a discussion, Mike, do you guys have anything? And, and make sure that, you know, I think each one of the, the entities should, should have a, a once-over with, you know, Brian, with you and council there in Germantown to make sure that there, there's no final questions to Mark Cross's point, you know, does everyone feel like everything's been addressed and we all have a general understanding of this? Um, because at the end of the day, to his point, when we go to the, the, the public hearing, these questions will and should come up from the, the public and we should be able to answer them. So, um, I, I would suggest not, not scheduling that thirty-day, uh, public hearing until we, we have some feedback from the school. Does anyone else have thoughts on that?
I wouldn't rush it. So. I think you get the answers from Farmersville and, uh, the school board still has to say they're willing to tax their teachers for no benefit to the school, so.
Well, we still have that. I know, we've gone over that.
Right, right.
So they still have to prove that and there's no questions have to be answered, so.
I wouldn't rush that.
Especially since we know the building project's been-
But it's not even gonna start till the end of this year or beginning of next year, I think they've already said, so, yeah.
I, I, I think I'm working backwards, uh, Brenda, this is where I'll need your help again. After the public hearing, and this is getting premature, but I'm trying to add up the leave time here and, and understand, you know, where we stand or how much time we really do have, once we hold a public hearing, then we come back and have another JED meeting likely after that, determine if there are any comments from the public or any changes we wanna make based on that discussion with the public hearing. If we do wanna make any changes, we have to make the draft changes, go back out with another thirty days' notice for another public hearing. If there's no changes we wanna make, though, and we wanna move forward with it as it stands, then at that point, it's for all the entities up to their vote, is that correct? All the entities go vote?
Right. Then each of the four would take it back to their next council meeting or whatever council or trustee meeting they wanna put it on. And then once all four have approved it, it's thirty days after that before it's effective and the JED board can start meeting and taking actions.
Okay.
There's only one public hearing?
Yeah, I was thinking there was two, but i, i, is there two public hearings or one, Brenda?
There is only one. There's only one unless you, as you say, if we make significant changes to the agreement, you know, if somebody finds a typo, you don't have to have another public hearing for that. But if you make changes to, you know, the revenue split or the area, these kinds of significant changes, then you have to refinalize sort of the documents and hold another public hearing. But if there are no changes after the first public hearing, that's the only public hearing required.
Clear, thank you.
What happens if one township doesn't have a majority vote? It, the township-
So you have-
Go ahead, Brenda.
There are options. It depends partly on which township it is, but the first option is, it goes on the ballot. Uh, so you have to put it on the ballot at, for a general election. And you have to get it on the ballot ninety days in advance to the Board of Elections, so you may or may not make this November's ballot. So, if it's, um, if that's the way that the parties wanna go, then you have to wait until the electors in that township vote on that and see if they voted in favor or not. Now, if it's German Township, you sorta have to do that because, as we said, we ca- Now, if it's German township, you sort of have to do that, because, as we said, we cannot proceed with the JED without German township. If it's Jackson township that doesn't unanimously pass it, you have another option, the other three parties can say, huh, they don't want to go on the ballot with this Jackson township, we don't want to wait that long, so we're going to redraft it and exclude them. And so then you would redraft the agreement and everything without that township, have another public hearing, process over again, then the other three would have to re-adopt to approve, because now it's a substantially different JED than approved. For German township, you have to go on the ballot, or you just pull the plug on the whole thing. For Jackson township, you have two options, go on the ballot or cut them out of the transaction and redo it.
I'm just looking at the calendar, um, when, when does, remind me for the seventeenth time, when does Village Farmersville meet monthly?
The second and fourth, Monday, probably most.
Okay. Um, I'm just trying to think, give you guys an opportunity to go back, and if it's not on this, on the agenda, you know, to talk it, um, internally, and then also give, give, uh, Brian and Brenda a chance to get together some information, get it over to the school. I mean, I guess, would meeting, meeting in, in June, uh, give everyone an opportunity to progress this, I guess, to where, make sure you guys, councils have no further questions, to come back to the group, and we can give the school some heads up and allow them some time to review it, and then we can have one last, you know, there's a couple of final changes here, I guess one change that we made tonight to the contract, so Brenda will have a chance to make that, and if anybody else has any final reviews there. We want to meet mid-June, and at that meeting, the intent be, if there's no, no issues with the school, the questions have been answered by Brian on that side, and, and you guys are good, from the, from the Village Farmersville, at that point, we can start looking at scheduling the public hearing.
Should we use the next month to get our, everybody's law directors, you know, get them on board with the final review as well?
Yeah, the final draft will need your review, and luckily, what they say.
Right.
So far, he's, we've got positive back from nothing else so far.
Yeah, um, and I don't know if maybe a new, as well, or whatever, um, yeah, I'm trying to think, uh, I guess we're the place where, once we make this one change here, which, uh, it probably can go to without even that change, but we can send it to the lawyer, the prosecutor's office, and have it reviewed, I guess, at this point, so, give them kind of thirty days. Brenda, does that make sense to go ahead and make this change, we talked about some of Germantown in German, and, uh, send that out to the prosecutor's offices and get them to start reviewing it?
Yes, I will, I will get that taken care of and get that back out, so, yes, you'll want to, yes, have the prosecutor's office review for the townships, and then Farmersville will want to have their attorney look at it.
I mean, structurally, I, I can't imagine it changing from what we have today, but let's just, let's just say you did send this out next week to the prosecutors, and, and Village Farmersville went back, and they, at their council meeting, had some discussions, that we have to have fifty percent, and then comes back and we have this discussion, the change of splits, then would we be sending it back out to prosecutors, or are they just mostly worried about the language and the way it's structured?
They're primarily going to be concerned with, yes, does it comply with the statutory requirements, is everything in there set up legally and, and so on and so forth? Um, uh, but if the townships have asked them to, you know, negotiate business points for them, then they may or may not care about those kinds of changes.
Okay, just trying to prevent, pre, or rework, but I guess, I guess it makes sense to send it, I, I can't imagine, we're going to go back through the entire structure, although we may change some, some splits or something, which I highly doubt at this point, but it's worth at least being able to revisit. So, I guess, that can be a next step that will capture them too, is, you know, once you make the adjustment to the, uh, contract, you'll send that to the prosecutors.
Do you have a question, and, again, I haven't been on board real long, but if the Village of Farmersville decided to back out of the income tax, would they still get twenty percent?
Back out of preparing on the income tax fees? Um, I, I think you would, I, I think the way that was set up was that they're, they're actually getting the twenty percent, and then there was some kind of agreement on how much they would get reimbursed for providing the income tax service, so you would just lose the revenue you guys were going to collect from the JED for preparing the income tax.
And Germantown would be required to.
No, they're going to outsource it, that's why Farmersville, that's why we want to keep the money in the community.
Well.
Because Germantown doesn't administer.
Right, so it's, it's set up for Farmersville to be the tax administrator, and they are collecting a, an administrator fee before the revenue split. If they don't want to do that anymore, it falls to Germantown, who will take the administrative fee, and they can then choose to outsource that, or, uh, you know, if at that point in time they're doing their own income taxes, they may keep it in-house, but, yes, one of the municipalities has to do the income tax collection.
And Derek, just getting your speed, I, I gotta find the spot, but I'm thinking it was forty-five hundred dollars, I want to say, somewhere in that range, does that sound right, somebody find it?
Somewhere between the one five percent.
I think it probably said four percent or something, I, it's.
Forty-five hundred dollars. Four percent of gross revenue tax for a minimum of forty-seven fifty, so you'll get four percent of whatever's collected, if it's less than forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, you get forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for doing the tax administration. What does Germantown, where they, where they outsource theirs, what percent do they draw, percent of revenues? Yeah, I, I don't know how that works, Brian, can you answer that?
Yeah, the, our outsourced, it's, uh, Cleveland CCA, I think they're at, we're at three percent with them right now. Um, maybe a little over three percent, I think that's where Nick just used the four percent, you know, assuming, uh, maybe a worst case.
Now, I, I'm not sure, but wasn't it something like a tier deal, the more people you have, the less the rate, or something like that, and so that we have less people, then, I, I don't recall what that was. Regardless.
Yeah, they, they, they base it on basically the number of contacts, right, so, so if they have to spend a whole lot of time in your community, you know, chasing people down to get them to, uh, file or whatever, then your rate's going to be higher. Um, so, I don't know, that's how it is, it, it, and it fluctuates, right, I mean, some years may be better than other years, but I think right now we're around three, maybe a little over three, just a little bit.
Okay, um, and, and again, any other questions, keep asking, I'll just keep walking through your next steps as you guys think of things. Um, that'll get sent to the county prosecutors, they'll get the chance to review it, I, I assume we try to meet back here in June, uh, but I would say probably mid is probably a better time, because we're not going to get these, these things over, you know, the one pager to the school, nor the, uh, the draft over to the prosecutors until at least mid, mid-May. So, I would want to give at least thirty days for the school to get the information, they're going to have to have a meeting, you know, or have discussions there, um, as well as give the prosecutors time to review it, so, that would be my suggestion, let's think about it and see if it makes sense, we meet sometime in mid-June, and, uh, we set a, a public hearing, that would be sometime probably early August, we would be having a public hearing, um, and, and sometime, we'll call it August, and then we have time to meet back after that as a group. Be brief on anything, even if we went back for another public hearing, we have to give thirty days' notice, we could be having that public hearing, hearing in early October at the latest, I would guess, and that would still give us time to, uh, then make any changes before the elections in November, um, as well as do any final hearings if we needed to, and vote in December if absolutely was necessary. So, that, that to me gives us ample time, does everyone feel okay with a mid-June meeting?
Yes.
Are you thinking like, what year is it? Thirteenth?
Let's say whenever this kid turns thirty days.
Yeah.
Our meeting is the fourteenth, I think yours is, both of yours is two, the second Monday.
So, do you want to meet for, for the meeting or after the meeting, because you guys, we would have already had one meeting, right, May tenth of, um, Farmersville?
Or next, between seventh.
Why don't we go after, just to make sure that you guys have time to get it on your agenda, so anytime the week of the fourteenth, after the fourteenth.
Okay, yeah, like the sixteenth? Yep, my calendar's wide open right now.
Wednesday, well, sixteen, I, I will say mine is two, because I have a new phone, and I don't have my calendar on there, so.
It looks really good right now.
And I'll probably get my email address and put it on the meeting schedule, if I'm not.
Yeah, and we, we have that problem, Mr. Heaton, if we can add the meeting invites to Mike and Brian and Brenda, maybe even Nick, so they have.
Certainly, I can do that.
Thank you, yeah, and Derek as well.
I do have a question for Brenda. We want to pick a day before. So, you want to do sixteenth at the Wednesday, I don't know what June sixteenth holds for any of you, but, but time, same time, earlier time?
Haley, that's later than our part, so we should be fine, so six, if we go back to six, I think that's okay?
Is there a pool board meeting that night? I have it on my calendar.
Oh, a pool board meeting, is that what you said?
Yes, pool, P-O-O-L.
Is that the third Wednesday, my, my phone's.
It is the third, it's the second, ninth, and sixteenth, so yes, there would be a pool board meeting if that's.
Yeah, you want to go the next Wednesday? Yeah, what about the twenty-third, Mr. Heaton?
Can we try for the seventh, I'm not sure if I'm going to be in town.
Okay.
Maybe leaving the state on the twenty-second.
Okay.
So, can we try the seventeenth then?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Seventeen, seventeen.
I don't show anything on my calendar, there would be a conflict.
Okay.
All right, six seventeen at six P.M.
Does that work with Brian and Brenda and?
For now, it looks good.
I'm good at six o'clock on the seventeenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I do, uh, Brenda, this is Haley, do you have access to your email at this time?
Um, I looked at the, at the thing that you sent me, um, and, um, I think I'll just need to add a, um, a key, in other words, I saw the little A, but I, I need to print it off and see what it looks like, and we may need to add a key so that anybody else looking at it knows that the A means agricultural, because.
Sure, yeah.
Since that picture was just by itself, there's no other, there's no other zoning classifications on it, so we'll have to have some kind of key, but I think, yes, that's very helpful, thank you.
So, what I just sent is up to date, uh, with the new, uh, there was a little bit of a land swap, and that information is not on our map that I have here at the township building, but the one that I sent you is the county map, which is up to date.
Okay, okay, good.
Hey, just to close out one of the two, sorry, there was no one living in the house on the property, any, at, at the current time. So, they have moved out.
There's no one, okay, perfect.
That's worked.
Well, I, I think that's all I have, the last thing I'll say is, I'm, I'm glad that this was a public mir, hearing, because Mr. Heaton will be sending out meeting notes, and not me, so, I'm happy he's going to record those. Um, is there any other comments before we close? Okay, I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
One second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at eight forty. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.